Hello, welcome and good morning. We so appreciate you being here with us today here at Experience Church. And we have some more light and information that we want to bring out to you. A lot of things happening. A friend and a partner is back with us today. We want to welcome you, Dr. Christensen. Christian, thank you so much for being with us.
Sure.
A professional educator and one of your associates is joined with us on Zoom, Dr. Darrell Ferguson. Darrell has been involved in the Christian education area for over 30 years. He's traveled and worked in Australia, US, Canada, served as the dean of college of humanities and international studies at the Department of University of the Nations in, is it Canberra?
Yeah, Canberra.
Got it, Australia. And so it is wonderful to have you with us today. Dr. Darrell is actually facing some very unique scenarios there. And we're talking about this because this is the way that is trying to breach the northern coast, if I could say it that way, of the United States and to get into the policies and the procedures of our educational system. It's just a matter, it's here, it's just not to the magnitude that it is up there, but it's trying to work its way down this way. So, Dr. Darrell, thank you so much for joining us today. Give us a little background of where you've been and the fight of getting on the school board and your determination to help fix what's going on up there in the education system.
Well, you know, I've been involved in Christian education, as you mentioned, actually more than 30, probably close to 35 years, but you know, I've always felt that we need to communicate the gospel, the gospel not only of salvation, but the gospel of the kingdom. And we need to do that in culture and we need to be involved wherever we are. And I moved somewhat retired or I sold my house and moved to a different city, east of Vancouver, a town called Chilliwack. And so I said to the Lord, well, you know, I'm in a small town here, what can I do? And I found a church that was very receptive to the fact that I did run seminars. It's quite interesting. I mean, I went around to a number of churches and said, hey, you know, I didn't tell them too much of what I did, but I said, you know, can we do anything on a Christian worldview? Believe it or not, some churches said, no, no, that's not our ministry. So I promptly left there and looked for another church. I found a church that was very receptive and said, yeah, we'd love to have a seminar. So I've been there for, I guess, the last seven years. So there was an election came up and there was a Christian man who's been on the school board for some almost 20 years and he was being really persecuted in the paper. You know, he was, they said he was, you know, he was against the LGBTQ. You know, he was genderphobic, you know, all these terms. He was transphobic, homophobic. And you know, I saw him being beaten down through the media. And even some Christians were, you know, attacking the man. So I met him and I found out he was a lovely guy who has a great Christian story. He's an Orthodox Christian. And so the election was coming up, which happens every four years.
Yeah.
Every four years is an election for school boards. I'm not sure if they're elected in the US. I believe they are or appointed in the school. There are 60 school districts in British Columbia. I had the number in Washington. I can't recall, but it's hundreds. And so I went around my church. I said, hey, you people, somebody should run, somebody should run, somebody should run. And I talked to Bevan and they said, hey, why, I said, why don't you run, why don't you run? The associate pastor came up to me and said, well, why don't you run? So I thought, well, I'll just throw my name in the hat just so I can encourage Christians. I mean, I'm not going to get elected because nobody knows me in the town. But I'm going to make my platform very clear. I'm against SOGI 123, which is Sexual Orientation Gender Identity Curriculum, which was brought in by the Education Department into British Columbia. And I'm sure you have something like that.
Yeah, we call it comprehensive sex ed in the state of Washington.
Yeah. So anyway, that was teaching that, you know, you can be born in a boy's body, but you're really a girl and that you can choose your gender and these sorts of things. So I made a statement and with, I ran with four other, five other people, including the man who was elected. And anyway, I got elected. Okay. So I, I'm one of the three conservative Christians, including that man on the board. We've been there. This is our fourth and final year. I'm planning to run again. I'm 69 years old. And I was about to, you know, my kids have said, Dad, you gotta get out of there. Your name's being dragged through the paper. I've got some newspaper articles here that call me everything under the sun. I mean, you know, I've been labeled, we've all been labeled, you know, as haters, as bigots, as homophobes, whatever. And so my kids are like, Dad, you gotta get out of there, you know? I mean, just take a break and it is stressful sometimes, you know? The stress and I think, hey, I should be retired. What am I doing here? And I felt the Lord say to me, and I felt stirred in my spirit that God never said quit. Like I thought, wait a minute, I can't quit in the battle. But if God releases me, then I know I'm okay, but I better not just quit because I'm frustrated, I'm stressed, my kids don't like it, I'm being labeled. So I believe that I will run again and leave it up to God's choice. That if I get elected, God wants me in the battle again. And that'll mean I'll be 73 at the end of the next term. But hey, you guys have had presidents that are older than that. Not that they, not that they have all their faculties there. We think of the current one, but hey, we'll get away from that. So, uh, so anyway, I'm prepared to let God lead the way. You know, it's not my life, it's his. So leave me and if he shuts the door, I'm going to be happy. If he opens the door, I'm going to say, obviously I got more to do. So I'm there and we're engaged in ideas from everything, from rainbow sidewalks being painted on schools to LGBTQ activism to native, the nativeizing or indigenizing the entire curriculum. So what that actually means is up for grabs and we just had a meeting yesterday about that. And so, you know, we've been called a, I've been called a racist. We currently have charges against us by the B.C. Human Rights Tribunal. I think you guys have something like that there. These human rights tribunals are like little courts that were used to protect people who got fired because they were pregnant or they were laid off because they had black hair or whatever. These are now weaponized to be used against conservatives. So anyway, that's my story. I'm still there and looking forward to seeing what God has. But I said to the Lord, here am I, send me, and he did.
Tremendous, tremendous.
Darrell, could I just ask for clarification here that you said there were five of you? Were all five of these believers that ran for the seats?
Yes, yeah, we, we got together and formed a kind of a slate and looked for people who, who were believers, who were educators. The one who didn't get in was a teacher with, I don't know, 25 years his experience. Two of them were retired teachers. So yeah, they, we're all believers for sure.
You told me once that, that there was a hope here or a strategic plan that you would get the majority on the school board, which has seven seats, so you needed four. And I believe you mentioned to me that there was one of the five that lost by a few votes. How many votes did that fourth person lose by? Do you recall?
Yeah, it was about 60 votes.
60 votes.
Yeah. So we almost got the majority, which you want to get.
Yes.
Because, you know, you've got a board, most of our boards in B.C., there's 60. And again, I can't remember how many you got in Washington.
60 boards, yeah.
60 school boards based geographically in districts. So our school district has 14,000 students. So we manage that.
So you lost, you lost the majority by a narrow margin. You also mentioned to me once that you had gone out to other churches besides your own and to Christian schools to garner support for you as a, as a block. And what did you find out out there? Did you get a lot of support from churches?
You know, we, we did get a lot of support from the reformed churches, believe it or not. There's a great organization here called ARPA, Association of Reformed Political Action. Fabulous group, you know. So we did get a lot of support and there's some churches were, you know, hesitant to, to talk about politics. I mean, you know, they didn't want to announce anything. They didn't want to say anything. They don't want to lose their tax status. So they were afraid. Our church pastor stood up and he said, look, I can't promote a candidate. I can't name a candidate, but he, in front of the whole church, he had two of us were running in that church. He said, well, look, there's a couple of people running. Why don't you stand up? And there they are, and there's information in the foyer. I can't tell you how to vote, but I will tell you this, go vote and learn about these candidates. So I thought that was pretty good. I was told, you know, by other pastor that, you know, like I was intolerant or something because I was going against SOGI 123 curriculum.
A pastor.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So, you know, we need to love these people and, but loving people doesn't mean accepting their, their belief systems. God loved the world, but he flooded it.
Well, a lot of people, they don't, they don't want to allow the Bible to get in the way of their theology. And, you know, they're really scared. Truth becomes somewhat of a violent form of, of a weapon that, that, that they want to demonize anybody that does stand for truth. And you've been vilified. You've talked about that. Tell us a little bit about some of the, the pressure that you have faced in the three of you standing for truth.
Well, we have board meetings, which are public. We just had one last night and we had to discuss a, again, I've got to be careful what I say because, but anyway, but we had to discuss the issue of a particular practice by First Nations people called smudging, which has to do with a prayer type service in school. So it's, it's difficult to comment without appearing to be a racist, which I'm not. So yeah, there's issues like that, but, but we've got challenges because we've got a chair and a vice chair who've been unified and basically renominated themselves over four years. None of the three of us have ever made it to vice chair or certainly chair. They protected that. They've launched something like 18 motions against us for what they call trustee conduct violations. You know, so you, we spent a lot of time having to answer to these charges just recently. And they, they appointed an investigator. So the board, the school district hired a professional investigator to look at the three of us and came to the conclusions that, you know, we had violated the school act. And so we went and got a very good lawyer because of that, because they were about to sanction us again. And this would all come out in the paper, you know, on the school district site that these three trustees have again, you know, violated this or that. So we got a good lawyer. And this lawyer took a look at what the investigator said and basically said, this is not legal, what they, what they're doing, claiming that they are protected under the, the rules of a board, in camera rules. So he demolished their, the, the actual investigator in a letter that we sent to the board one hour before the meeting, they were about to, you know, attack us and publicly state that, that we were being sanctioned. So one hour before, he sent this letter and he basically demolished the investigator saying, this investigator has no qualifications to make legal judgments about an in-camera meeting. You know, he's a retired superintendent, right? So the lawyer calls him on it. What legal training has he got to make legal judgments about my clients? Secondly, he called them on the fact, their meeting that they called to do this was illegal and pointed out why. And also they were called out on the fact that they had come into a conflict of interest position by even being in on a meeting they shouldn't have been in on. So basically he shredded their case and said, if you're going to do this to demean my clients, there will be legal consequences. Well, guess what happened? They immediately dropped the meeting. And they immediately stopped this inquisition. So that's recent. That's pretty recent, the last couple of weeks.
We have to understand better who's attacking us, why, why are we being attacked? That, that helps us understand. If we understand our enemy better, we can understand what's going on. And, and the Bible does tell us to love our enemies, but it doesn't mean that we have to accept their policies. And so we could go back to the Kennedy era of Democrats. And Democrats then are much, much different than what we were, are considering what a leftist is. And from, from your viewpoint, Dr. Darrell, what, what are you seeing up there? The difference with, with somebody that is a leftist that is coming after you right now?
Okay. Well, let me just clarify something. Having done two degrees in philosophy, I mean, terms are important. So I think the term leftist, you know, Democrats are all leftists, whatever, is unhelpful. Because what we want to do as Christians is define the world in terms of biblical, non-biblical, right? Biblical, non-biblical. Because quite honestly, there might be some Democrats who are biblical in some policies. And there might be some Republicans who are not biblical in some policies. And we've seen that in elections. So it should not be the case where we always say, you know, Christians always vote Republican or whatever, because things can change. But, so I would say, don't, you know, leftist is a general term, sure, but it's hard to pin down. So I would look at it from the lens of what is this person biblical or not? And then you have some measuring stick. Otherwise you have no way to measure what, what a Republican is or what a Democrat is in terms of biblical stance. So you have to go issue by issue. So I think we should be familiar with the issues and then start identifying those such as education or school board. Okay. What are the policies? The school board in Washington and in one of your counties is going to do with these textbooks, promoting LGBTQ lifestyle under the guise of inclusion.
Right.
So, or let's take something else, Islam. And I have my master's degree on Islamic politics and I've spent a lot of time looking at the US. Islam is also a major non-biblical or anti-biblical worldview that is penetrating US education and is being pushed as culture and sanitized through the views. And some states have actually, you know, had to stand on the constitution to like Oklahoma and that, to prevent it from being taught. So if you're going to talk school boards, we got to look at the ideas that are being pushed through the textbooks. Your education association, what's it doing? What, what books are, is that district promoting or practices or what teachers are teaching? So parents have to, have to be on the ground running and, and listen to what their kids are learning. And, and we have every right here in British Columbia to challenge the teacher and the principal and the school and the system. So basically in Canada, education is still a parental right. Parents are in charge of education. Trouble is they're abdicating that. They're not getting into the school boards. They're not running. They're not going to the teacher. And the, the, well, we use the term then leftist or those with an atheist. I would like to use the word atheist worldview, dominate and get elected. And then they begin to, to put their ideas through curriculum and hire teachers that meet that objective. And universities do the same thing. So we should be aware of the ideas. So to me, it's an ideas battle. 2 Corinthians 10:4. We're at war with every idea raised up against the knowledge of God. And we're to bring every thought captive. Now, the problem with Christians getting involved in battles is if they haven't renewed their own mind, it's useless to jump into a battle and start declaring that something's true. Global warming is true, that you're born homosexual, that, you know, there's 58 genders. You know, so the Christian has to start cleaning up his own mind and getting biblical before he can even understand what a non-biblical view is. And that's the problem is we don't have Christians who think biblically and so we have to train them.
Well, I, I think there, the day that we're living in, there's a distinction between, you know, the Christians and people that attend church that like the idea of church. They're good at church. They're just terrible at God and the Bible and all of that. And it just reminds me of the difference between the wheat and the tares because you really don't know the difference between the wheat and the tare until come harvest time. And I think we're nearing that harvest time, but you know, the harvest time says the wheat has its, its fruit on it and so therefore it bends over in humility while the tare stands, stands straight up because there is no fruit on it. And I think we can no longer distinguish calling or identifying as a Christian and not identifying with the morality of God's word too. And I think that's a, that's a real frustrating point that we're finding in the day and age that we're living in. And that's why, you know, I tend to trumpet these five values because there's a lot of churches that share, you know, you look on their website, you look at our website and you'd see the same tenets of faith. But there's great distinctions because we will publicly declare, hey, we, we are for biblical marriage between one man and one woman. We believe that there's only two genders. We believe that they're in the right to life. We believe in the rule of law with responsible policing. And we believe that we're all created equal, acts as we've come from one blood. And so what we're finding is a lot of churches and a lot of people that like the idea of being a Christian, really, if you're not standing for those five values, I don't know how somebody could identify biblically as a Christian. And so those are some of the challenges that we're facing. But yet we're using this as, as kind of a marker to find out, are you a Christian?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that the issue is whether people are Christians or not. It's true. We, we want people to be Christians, but what we have is a body of Christ who are Christian and they, they certainly are born again. They love, love the Lord, but they don't have a Christian mind. They have a Christian heart, but not a biblical mind. So, so we need to go back to Mark 12:30, which says, "You should love the Lord your God with your heart, soul, mind and strength." And so what does that mean to love God with your mind? We have to examine the ideas you have. Who did you vote for? Why? Why are you working there? What do you think of this? So we need to ask ourselves these questions and be willing to write our answers down. And you're going to see what your worldview is. So I want to come back to the term worldview because it's bigger than morality. It's not that Christians are moral. It's not that Christians are nice or whatever. It's the issue that, that we're not salt anymore. And we're getting trampled, underfoot by men. And that's exactly what the Bible says in Matthew 5:13. You know, you're the salt of the world, but if you lose it, you're good for nothing. Okay? So the two scariest words in the Bible are if and but. And I get my butt out of the 2 Chronicles 7:14, you know, which is an if, or sorry, is an if one. "If my people, if, okay, if my people who are called by my name able to humble themselves, pray, seek my face, turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven for forgiveness and heal the land." So God's intention from the scripture is to impact the land, to bring healing. Healing means you get rid of disease. The Bible defines diseases as philosophies. Colossians 2:8. See, too, you don't become captured by these philosophies. So, so we're the healers, but if we, if we don't, we've never studied medicine. I don't want a doctor who says, hey, I feel pretty good about where I'm at with Jesus. You know, can I do this operation on you? Get away from me, pastor. You're not qualified to do heart surgery, even though you're, I'm not insulting the pastor here. If I'm going to fly on United Jet, I don't care if the pilot is a Christian or not. What I care about is he got any skill, does he know anything, does he have any truth about flying? You know, if I get a famous pastor in the US says, hey, I got all faith. I can do all things. I say, go for it, pastor. You, you, you take off and fly around the airport. If you come back alive, I'll believe in your claim. So the issue is knowledge. And the Bible says, "My people perish for lack of knowledge," not zeal, knowledge. So the knowledge is, what is God's opinion about politics and the people running or the school board or the ideas being put out there? What ideas are we engaging? Or, you know, I don't want to play church. I mean, things, it's, and by the way, I'm respectfully saying all this. I'm not against church. I go to church. But the, the issue is not church, it's the body of Christ. Very little happens in a church on a Sunday because that's the nature of celebration. We remember and celebrate. That's why we only go to church once. We go work in the world six days. That's your ministry. So Christians have not understood their task, that they're called. And they, if I could quickly give a story, see, I've got so many stories. See, I'm a teacher. I'm like Chris, we can't stop, right, Chris? Okay. Okay. So I was in the student, I've talked to many Christian student conferences in Australia over the years. And I had a big one with 250 Christian group leaders. And I go around the room and ask these students, what are you taking? Oh, I'm studying medicine. I'm studying economics. I'm studying law. So I said to the law student, why are you studying law? And he looked at me and the whole room looked at me with stunned silence. He said, well, I prayed about it. I said, but why would God want you to, to study law? Oh, well, my parents also confirmed it. My mom and dad felt that was right too. I said, you're not answering the question. Why would God want you to study law? He said, well, my pastor too, he, he really felt strongly about it. And I said, but why would God want you to study law? He had no answer. Nobody had an answer. And I finally looked at him and I said it, and this is a great thing to say to a room full of students. I said, God doesn't want Christian lawyers. He wants biblical law. Going to university to be a lawyer is a strategy, not a goal. Church is a strategy, not a goal. And so he had no destiny. He had no idea of what his calling was. He just wanted to be a lawyer. We, we don't need Christian doctors. We need biblical medicine where we, where we don't have abortion. We don't have euthanasia. You see, so people are stopping with a job. When I lived in Seattle, 92, I mentioned, I met a lot of people like that. They'd tell me what their job was and I'd ask them, well, what are you doing on earth? You know, I like that pastor, um, the Saddleback Church who'd written that book, you know, Your Purpose Driven Life. I mean, the point, his point is valid. What's my purpose and how am I aiming at it? If I don't have any aim, you're bound to hit it, right? Aim at nothing, you'll hit it.
That's right.
So second, a quick story. In that conference, there was a girl who was from Papua New Guinea. Papua New Guinea is north of Australia. It's kind of a, you know, I don't use the word primitive area, but you know, it's, there's a lot of headhunters and the gospel went in there with Don Richardson. Anyway, she came up to me afterwards when I said, well, look, the idea of a secular domain is not biblical. It's Latin. It's not in the Bible. So we use this word secular. We should not be using it because government is not secular. Education's not secular, which we use. We're defeating ourselves intellectually by using the term secular. It's not a biblical term. It's imported and it's used wrongly. It means that, well, we don't have religion in government or we don't have religion in education. False. You have worldviews because you have elected people in government. Every person in the Supreme Court of the United States has a worldview and you're getting that worldview legislated. So Christians must be in government, just like atheists are in government because they have a worldview, we have a worldview. And you're getting more Muslims in your government now because they have a worldview too. So it's a battle of ideas. So the idea that we have a secular country and this, this ridiculous notion of separation of church and state, which has been used in the United States to keep Christians out of government, it was to keep the government out of the church. It was to stop the US government from mandating a state church. That's what it's all about. It's never to keep people out of government. So Christians must be on the Supreme Court, must get elected to school boards, must run for government so that salt can penetrate. So this woman who was a, she was a medical doctor already and she, she came up to me and says, I've been liberated by this idea of secular. And I said, well, how is that? She said, my pastor, no offense here again, pastor, my pastor is telling me that I should come and serve God. And you know what she was doing? She was doing a PhD in neurology at the University of Sydney. Not only was she a medical doctor, but she's way up there in terms of the percentage of people who going for this kind of training at that university. I mean, how many people in Papua New Guinea have that? So she was very specialized. She wanted to be, she was studying neurology, brain surgery, right? So she said, my pastor's been telling me all these years, why don't you serve God? Why don't you come into the ministry? You know, and, and she felt guilty all the time because he'd come up, so you know, God wants you to be in the ministry to serve him. And when I shattered the idea that ministry is spiritual and working in government is secular, and that's a false dichotomy, she was liberated. She came up to me, she says, I believe God's called me to medicine. I said, I can tell you're a doctor and you're doing neurosurgery. She said, I'm so excited because I know God has spoken to me, but I've always felt guilty. And I said, well, look, what, what might you think you could do with this? Has God given you any indication of what this kind of training could lead to? She says, oh, then she got really excited because God speaks to people. He gives them a vision. He gives them a calling. He helps them understand. She said, oh, I, I, I would wonder, maybe I could become health minister of health one day in Papua New Guinea. I said, yes, speak it out, sister. That could be an aim for that. And I said, okay, okay, one more question. If you were to become minister of health in Papua New Guinea, tell me, has God given you any sense of what you might do in that position? She says, oh, I would make abortion legal. I said, amen.
Illegal.
I said, that to me, as somebody who's broken through that secular sacred thing, you know, I'm not in ministry. The pastor's in ministry and, you know, we got this hierarchy. If I could just, I gotta get this in there because as a teacher, I gotta get that solid. We have made a hierarchy of vertical. What's the most spiritual thing? Well, to be a pastor or a missionary. Okay. What's the next most spiritual vocation? And I'm going to run through this quickly. And it's usually people wrestle with this. They go, well, let's see, okay, a doctor, because you know, you can bring healing to people. Okay. What's the next spiritual thing? What about a mechanic or a teacher? Oh, no, teacher's more spiritual because you know, you could teach Bible stories on Sunday. Okay. What's, what's more? Okay, what's, what's more spiritual than musician or politician? Oh, no, musician, cause you know what, you can play in a worship service and some, so they rank all these things, it happens all the time. And then we get down to the, the last two, well, well, what's more spiritual, a lawyer or, or, you know, a carpenter? Well, a carpenter, you know, these like, so finally, the last two are politicians and the worst of them all is lawyers or the one or the other two. They're on the bottom of this hierarchy. And I say, you know what, you've just described Hinduism, you're Hindus. There's nowhere in the Bible, Jesus said, come and I'll make you more spiritual. He said, obey my commands, that's it, there is no more spiritual this, more spiritual that. What's more spiritual, drums or violins? What's more spiritual, carpet or hardwood? That's where you get messed up. So the Bible doesn't use that term, it uses obey me, keep my commandments, do my will. This is my food to do the will of him who sent me. And by the way, I'm preaching like a madman here, I love, uh, Ephesians five eleven. Do not participate in the unfruitful deeds of darkness, but expose them. And finally, we are thinking about the fact that Jesus in Matthew sixteen twenty-two rebuked his own disciple Peter. When Peter said, you're not gonna go to the cross, Jesus spun around. Imagine this, okay, Jesus spun around, pointed at Peter and said, get behind me Satan. For you're not setting your mind, you got a wrong idea here that came from the pit of hell. Your mind is now captured by Satan. And you need to get rid of this, you're not setting your mind on God and his interest. So the biggest issue today is Christians don't seek to love God with their mind, they just absorb whatever comes through CNN. Or, or Fox, or any, any station, you never know.
I just wanna clarify one thing, your doctor friend said if she got into that position, she, she would make abortion illegal.
Illegal, yes.
Illegal, yeah, I just wanna make sure, yeah, you said legal, but you meant illegal.
Oh.
No, it's okay, I'm just a teacher, I'm kinda nitpicky, but, uh, just wanna make sure everybody understood that.
Yes, illegal, yes, okay, so.
In, in, in wrapping up this next five minutes. Uh, what charge or challenge would you put to somebody that's sitting on the fence and they have the ability, they have the pedigree, they have the experience that they could sit in a position like you're sitting and impact, bring light, bring salt to the place? But they're on the fence, they're nervous, they're scared or they're ambivalent, what, what would you say to them?
You'd never know till you try, right? I mean, God, somebody once said, you can't steer a parked car. And that's so true, you've gotta be moving, you gotta be obeying God, we've gotta be moving forward. And so once you're moving forward and, and you're putting, putting it before God. Because I said, God, here's my life, lead me, I'm not trying to form it myself, he led me to university, he led me to do this PhD. He led me to do these things. And so people need to be willing and available, available to God, here am I, send me, that's the first thing. And then take the first step, the first door, if it's lead a prayer group or, or, or go join a witnessing team or do something. God will open a door, I believe this, for every Christian to take at least one step next. And, and that will lead, if you keep obeying, into the area where you're gonna bear fruit for him. So get elected, run for it, you don't get elected, you try again or, you know, keep trying to get others elected. So, practical.
Well, thank you, thank you for the, the work that you're doing, the fight, um, and thank God that, uh, you, you have the heart to say, I'm not done until I'm dead. And, you know, you, you have, you have.
Paraphrase.
Yes, just a paraphrase. But so many people wanna punch out, uh, early, when, when they have so much more to offer because of life experience, education, every, the culmination, it's, it's a culmination of so many things that come to somebody in your season of life that we need mentors, we need men of God like you, women of God like you gentlemen. To continue to mentor the youngers, uh, and, 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 uh, carry on the fight because you are a blessing. So thank you so much.
Thank you for having me, really appreciate it.
Thanks, Daryl.
God bless.
Thank you again for joining us here today, Experienced Church. Uh, don't forget to follow us on social media, podcast as well, YouTube and experiencedchurch.tv. God bless you and we'll see you next time.